The Essential Parish Planning Commission will come to order. Let the record show that all members are present except Chairman Donald Sanjay, who's away on a family member. We all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Point your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff introduce themselves, please.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Michael Petty, Planner.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Ray Miller, Engineering Department.
Tim Ward, Engineering.
Is that everybody? I have no comments. Is there any member of the public that has signed up for the public comment period? In that case, we'll move to the first agenda item, the public hearing to approve or deny the following family partitions. First one is Janet. Oh, let me back up. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nizo, calendar. Minutes are approved. All right. The first, the Janet Mueschel part.
James, I'll be representing Earls and Associates and Dwight Sears on the following family partition. Comments were made, addressed, and corrected on the plat, asking the commission for approval.
All comments are addressed. Staff recommends approval.
Is there any public comment? Have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second for approval on this. All in favor? Those opposed? Any Virginia Brennack estate?
Darrell Williams with Alvin Fairburn and Associates, representing Mr. Tolplay. Darrell Williams with Alvin Fairburn, representing Mr. Tolplay for the family partition. We ask that you guys approve it for us.
Do the public, do the officials have any comment?
Okay, on this one, there were several comments made at the initial review. The applicant submitted a revised map indicating that all comments have been addressed. After the second review, it was noted that a number of the comments actually were not addressed as originally made. So I provided on the review comments in the packet, comments that are still outstanding. And I'll just read the ones that are outstanding. Per Section 17-4038 of the Land Development Code, a 12-foot utility servitude is required for all proposed lots. And I ask that the drawing be revised to add this servitude. The servitude was added along the proposed track, E3A1, along one side, but the servitude is required to be along a 12-foot of the entirety of E3A3, as well as the E3A2, proposed E3A2, needs a 12-foot utility servitude shown around the required T-turnaround that has also not been added to the drawing. That's a part of Comment 8. From that point, the drawing needs to be revised to show the existing driveway for the existing residence of proposed lot E3A3. And then the comment per Parish Land Development Code, a T-turnaround is required for the private servitude of passage. The drawing needs to be revised, revise the turnaround, and adjust the utility servitude and setbacks accordingly. Also, the parish records show as far as FEMA designation, that the property falls within the floodplain designation AE, not X-shaded. The map needs to be revised to reflect the current floodplain designation. In addition to that, the correct base flood elevation for the property needs to be verified since the flood zone was not correct. And then from engineering, the lot acreage calculations are wrong. The total acreage of each of the three proposed lots were off by fractions of acres, and so the actual acreage is reflected in the note there. So staff recommends approval based on satisfaction of comments number 1, 2, 5, and 8 through 11 being addressed, or actually 8 through 12 being addressed, adding the engineering note.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the applicant, is there any reason why the 12-foot utility servitude requirement couldn't be met, or the T-turnaround requirement? Those two seem to be the only two physical issues on that. Was that listed on the original, on the original comments by you guys?
Yeah, I took these comments from the original comments that were made in the email back on the original. The only additional comment that's in addition to what I made originally from the review is the engineering note of the acreage calculations. And so those were given to me after the engineering department had had a chance to review. I also want to add, because I overlooked it, that the drawing needs to be revised to provide instrument numbers for the reference maps listed on the plat, as well as the drawing needs to be revised to change the label of the proposed parcels to lots rather than tracks.
The T-turnaround, the servitudes apparently was an oversight, but we have no problem making these revisions to the plat. Well, in that case, I would recommend that we recommend this for approval to the council.
A second? Or another comment?
Yes, a comment. You're going to recommend approval based on one that you've been...
Assuming that the comments are addressed.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Motion, a second. All in favor? Those opposed? All right, let's see. We have public hearing to approve or deny the following subdivision for final plat, Woodgate Townhomes, Phase 1 and 2.
Robbie Overall, GWS Engineering, representing Woodgate Townhomes. I believe I've submitted the final plat for review. I believe I've addressed all of their comments and request approval of these additional five lots.
Staff, what do you say?
Okay, on this one, we had a similar situation. We issued comments, received a revised map, as well as a letter and a couple of exhibits back from the applicant addressing their stance on the comments. I've gone through and I've covered all the comments that were initially made. There were a total of 12 comments. The ones that have been addressed, you'll see in italics, have been addressed. So I'll cover the ones that we feel are still outstanding. Comment number four, proposed lot 23 has its rear northwestern corner encroaching into the existing drainage ditch. Townhome lot shall not encroach upon existing ditches, et cetera. Please revise lot layout to remove encroachment and adjust setbacks and servitudes accordingly. Comment number five, per the Parish Development Code 17-4022, each townhome lot shall have 400 square feet of private outdoor space. This space cannot be encumbered by servitudes, right-ofways, et cetera. Please confirm that lots 22 and 23 meet the required 400-square-foot requirement after addressing comment below. And so if you'll refer to your packet, the applicant submitted a drawing that illustrates how Lot 23 is accommodating the 400-square-foot private outdoor space. You'll see that there is a portion of the rear of Lot 23 that has the outdoor space, as well as they use the actual side lot of the structure as part of that calculation. You'll notice I highlighted the portion along the side of the building, and that square footage is approximately 383 square feet. And so when you take that out of the 690 square feet, you're left over with a 370.2, or 307.2 square foot leftover space in the rear of the lot. And so my comment on that was, you know, at face value, the lot has 690 square feet of private outdoor space, but staff feels like, you know, considering you're taking out, you know, 382 or 383 square feet of space along the side of the building, which, you know, is only five feet of width, that, you know, it's not really meeting the true intent of having 400 square feet of private outdoor space. And if you'll continue on with the comments, the access to the existing track TP, which is the treatment plant track, there's also a sketch that the applicant provided that shows how the treatment plant is being accessed. It's through a 15-foot shared drainage servitude, as well as access servitude to that treatment plant, which runs through the rear of Lot 23, which, when you take into consideration the true rear of the townhome, is going to be encumbered by, you know, 15-foot of drainage servitude, as well as, you know, access to the treatment plant that exists just a few feet behind that lot. We felt like, you know, like I said, at face value, it may meet the required 400 square feet, but, you know, in actuality, it's falling somewhat deficient upon that. And then the comment number 10, revised drawing to include top bank width of the existing drainage ditch. The applicant's shown the drainage ditch to be the 30-foot design width, which comes from the drainage construction plans that were submitted as a part of the preliminary plat of the development. However, through discussions with our drainage director, as well as aerial imagery, the ditch today is actually greater than that through, you know, probably erosion, you know, taking place. And so, you know, by definition, it requires a greater servitude. The applicant actually met with the drainage director, and so they worked out where that's not the case. I'm just pointing out that the code still requires it, and I'm kind of leaving it that. And so based on the conditions of Lot 23 encroaching upon the ditch, the square footage requirement of the private outdoor space, we are recommending denial based on comments number four and five.
Okay, let me, I may address these as best I can. I did try to, I did meet with the parish, and the ditch as it exists, the servitude in the ditch were actually built by my client. Prior to this project, it was a marginal ditch, if anything, a big swale ditch. And it was built for this project, and the servitude 15 feet off each top bank was created in conjunction with this project. And in fact, I believe you were supplied copies of the approved preliminary plat. I don't know if that was in your handout. I have one here. This is all essentially already been approved on a preliminary plat level. The lot layout, the exact building footprint, the joined access to get to track TP actually already exists on the existing final plat. That's nothing new. That's an existing condition. So, and then, you know, if we're going to argue the intent of the rule, I mean, it's, we're satisfying the rule with the free space. And in fact, I don't even believe in my sketch, there's additional free space on the front of the townhome that I'm not sure I even included, but it's there. So, you know, it's, the space is there. It's legally there. It satisfies the rule. If we're going to start getting into the intent of the rule, then maybe it's, maybe there could be some clarification later on. And again, the fact that the lot itself encroaches into the servitude was, you know, that's just, that's the way the project was designed and approved several years ago. We're merely, we're merely beginning to finish an existing project. So we're not asking for anything new, simply to permission to proceed with what's already been approved.
I'd like to hear the staff's. Okay, the encroachment into the servitude, we don't necessarily have a problem with, with the proposed Lot 23. You know, like the applicant stated, that was, you know, given as servitude, and, you know, the shared drainage access servitude was a part of the preliminary and then the final plat of Phase 1. What we feel like is an issue is that the lot actually encroaches within or past the top bank of the ditch. And so, you know, that becomes the problem. It's not that, you know, the servitude runs through the rear of the property, but, you know, if you were to, you know, revise the lot layout of that lot to stop it at the top bank of the ditch, what ultimately would happen is you would have to offset that line for your building line, your rear building line. And at that point, when you do that, you're literally cutting off the corner of that building. And so that's where we felt like was a problem, because the lot can't extend within the ditch. And so as far as the comment on the private open space, the code reads that there shall be a 25-foot yard alongside and rear of each townhome site, and that is the overall site, not the each building site. And then it reads, each townhome shall have its own lot, yard, space, or enclosed courtyard area. So one space, not multiple spaces that add up to. Of at least 400 square feet, reasonably secluded from view of streets or from neighboring property, such yard shall not be for all-street parking or for any accessory building. And so we feel like, like I mentioned earlier, that the five-foot wide side yard does not really meet the intent of what is described within the code for what would be considered a private lot yard space.
Again, I don't even know, I don't even feel that this should be a discussion, because it's essentially already been approved on the preliminary plat level. And I mean, if I can even ask if this can, is this even, I mean, would this be an issue? I mean, again, it's already been approved. You know, I don't, I don't want to do this on behalf, like speak on behalf of my owner in this instance, but Lot 23, if you look to the left of it, there's that triangular piece. I can move the line and get, you know, get plenty of square footage to get some green space for that one particular lot. It would be contiguous, it'd be one piece, but I just, again, I don't feel like I need to do that. And again, the preliminary plat was approved with the top bank of the ditch shown. It was constructed per the plans that were approved by the parish. The project has been, that facet of the project has been accepted many years ago by the parish. If the top bank of the ditch is out of shape, which I have no doubt, over the few years, it probably could use a little dressing up. But the lot was approved this way initially by the parish. I'm just merely asking for the final plat to be approved. And, you know, I can see if I can tweak this lot to get that corner clip out of the physical ditch. I don't feel like I should have to, but I mean, we're talking literally like two by three feet. Can I ask, did it be approved as is? Is that acceptable? I mean, but if you're going to deny it, I don't want to, but I just feel like it should be accepted. I've met with the parish. I just, I feel like this is an acceptable request.
Mr. Chairman, I would not want to deny this based on the technicality regarding the square footage issue. The only concern now seems to be the encroachment on the ditch right-ofway. So can that be resolved or not? That is something that this commission can't address now.
Well, I don't feel that the, I don't feel that the issue is the encroachment onto the ditch right-ofway. I feel the sticking point at this point is the encroachment of the lot itself over the top bank of the physical ditch.
We have a comment.
I believe so.
You can if he calls you.
Yes.
Billy Aguilar, I mean, we have approved probably 50 or 60 subdivisions in the last 10 years, and probably every one of them has a rear ditch servitude with a rear ditch on the rear of all these lots. Now, who said you can't have a lot encroaching to a servitude? Because every lot on every approved subdivision we have has a ditch on the rear side of it, and the ditch is inside of the lot line.
Other than the square footage issue, what else does the staff object to? Other than the square footage issue we discussed, what else does the staff object to with regarding to the...
I just think that quite simply, it's the encroachment of the lot line into the top of the bank of the ditch. On the preliminary plat, when we reviewed it, it almost looked like it was just two lines that were contiguous. They sort of overlapped. At the corner of the lot line was the top of the bank of the ditch. At this plan, when we were reviewing it, there is literally area of that lot that is in the downslope, potentially underwater part of that ditch. And so we felt like the lot line shouldn't be part of that ditch. It should be separate. The whole drainage servitude and sewer treatment plant, we recognize those are ills of the past that we cannot resolve. We wanted you guys to be aware that they were noted, and in case you had questions, we had addressed them, with the lot overlapping into there. Now, the intent of the townhome subdivision code, as I interpret it, was to create a private space for each of those owners, to be a fenced-in private space so they can put a barbecue pit, so they can, and 400 square feet was established in the code. And if they're offering to redraw that lot line to create 400 contiguous square feet that can be fenced in, then I recommend that we do that, because that's the intent of the code. Townhouse lots don't have a lot of private space. I would venture a guess that on the preliminary plat, we didn't have actual building square footages. We probably had a shaded-in line that reflected what a setback envelope was. And so whether or not Mr. Becknell back then was able to calculate the 400 square feet, I can't answer that question. That was before my time.
If he were to change the lot line in the rear of the property to, then is there a setback issue with the building?
He could request a variance for that setback issue, but yes, there will be a setback issue, but that is something he can go to the Board of Adjustments and get the variance, because he's, there's a hardship of the ditch.
Mr. Ori.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I guess I just feel like there's going to be a physical property line that's going to be in the, you know, within the top bank of the ditch, but on the other hand, this is, this was approved as a preliminary plat, so the developer was, I guess, under the impression that they can move forward with their design as it was previously approved. It's kind of hard to change that up on them and incur that additional time and cost, I guess, if...
The preliminary plat did not depict any significant portion of that lot inside the top bank of that ditch. The lines are almost contiguous. So if that was the intent when the preliminary plat was submitted, that's not what we're looking at today. They don't match.
Has anything changed from that preliminary plat on this lot, or the building footprint?
No, absolutely not. Was the top of the bank surveyed for this survey?
No, the entire, the top of the bank of the ditch was not surveyed.
Can we put it back on the, can we put it back on the screen? Would that help if we can see what we're talking?
The top bank of the ditch was not surveyed in conjunction with the preparation of this revision. The top bank was designed, built, and accepted a few years ago. I mean, is it probably not in a tip-top shape? You know, is it freshly graded like it was a few years ago? Probably not. Could it be brought back to snuff with, you know, during the courts of building this, you know, just dress it up? Probably. I mean, it's not an enormous ditch. I just, I just, I can appreciate what the Planning Commission is trying to do. It's just, you're trying to almost, you know, you're trying to burden this existing project with new intentions and rules, and it's, I just don't feel it to be, that should be the case.
Mr. Catwell.
If the lot encroaches on the ditch, then at some point, there could be a structure built on that lot. Am I correct?
No, not on the ditch. Well, I mean, there will be a structure on the lot itself, but not on the ditch. No, no, that's impossible, but due to utility servitudes, access servitudes, and ditch servitudes. I mean, no, no structure can be built.
Well, and that is my concern, because the code 17-8051, no permanent structures permitted within servitudes. So now, how do we know at no point, there's going to be a structure there if we're going to allow a lot to encroach upon the ditch?
Lots, lots don't, lots don't encroach on the servitudes. Lots are burdened by servitudes. Every subdivision lot in this parish is, okay, 99.99% of them are burdened by a servitude. Okay? Whether it be a parish, you know, a 15-foot rear drainage servitude, a 12-foot utility servitude, every single lot in this parish has a servitude on top of it, and they have the revocation, you know, there's just, that's what servitudes are there for, to keep that from happening. So nothing can be built, or will be built there legally.
Would it be that much of a hardship for, to request a variance to ensure that the lot in itself is not within the servitude?
No, we can't take the lot out of the servitude, and I, and again, that's, I don't, that, no, I mean, we can't, we can't remove the lot from the servitude, and it's just not practical at this juncture.
Mr. Ori.
I guess I'm, I guess I feel like we're not really doing the, you know, the public an injustice by, you know, if this were to get approved, that wouldn't be doing a person injustice if they were to purchase it. You just might have trouble selling it, because when you walk out the back door, you're walking into a ditch.
It's deceiving, there is space there. I mean, but yes, it's, I guess the burden would be on the seller.
You might have a hard time selling it, I guess, I don't know.
I mean, that's, you know, that's not, you know, that's not our concern essentially.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the problems we have here is that this project was approved, like Mr. Ori is referring to, but it was approved based on, from what I'm hearing from staff, the initial plat that was presented, and this revised final plat that we're looking at is not the same thing. And it makes it kind of hard for me to make a decision based on hearing that it wasn't encroaching into the ditch with the initial plat.
It was. Nothing has changed.
Yeah, I'm understanding it to be the same.
Nothing has changed from the preliminary to this juncture.
The preliminary plat shows the lot line of that lot corner going up and touching the top bank. The final plat that we received as a part of this submission shows that lot corner going beyond the existing top bank.
We have actually two different presentations.
So there are two separate situations. I don't know if it was an issue of just where the top bank was drawn during the preliminary plat, and it's more, you know, approximately located on this final plat. I mean, I'm not questioning that the lot has changed necessarily, but graphically, what is shown on the plat is not the same as what was approved preliminarily with those lots.
Do you have, do you have a copy of the preliminary plat available?
Is that what you have under?
Yeah, I mean, this is what I have.
That's what got approved?
And it's clear to me.
Can we? Well, I guess maybe we can just pass it along, I mean, just to see. See, I feel like nothing's really changed with the preliminary to final plat, especially with that corner of that lot.
I tend to agree with Mr. Ori that...
I'm not seeing...
That it seems like it was approved.
Like from the time the ditch draw was submitted to there. Seems like we'd be incurring almost a redesign from something they were under the impression that they can move forward on.
You know, whether it was approved or not, if it's, if it still doesn't meet the code, it doesn't meet code. It could have been inadvertently approved, but I think, I still think it's a technicality. I think Josh is right, that it's going to be sort of let the buyer beware. You're not going to quite have the square footage that we intend, you know, that we intended there'd be, and I appreciate the staff's diligence in looking at this this way, but I'm not, I'm not ready to deny this on that basis, though.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm in agreement with the other two gentlemen. I have more of a philosophical question about, just because something was approved... I have more of a philosophical question about, just because something was approved some time ago before any of us were around, his supposition is, we can't change that, and shouldn't. And I'm wondering why we wouldn't? If something's wrong, something's wrong, or if it was interpreted a different way, and it's, you know, this is a different day. So philosophically, how are we going to fix that?
That is probably an in-depth question that we need to sit down with legal and probably do a little case research, just nationally, to see what the policies are. I would make the same argument about drainage. The existing building has sandbags against the side of it. Why does it have sandbags? Probably because the drainage doesn't work. So is this building going to resolve any drainage issues? We're not here to answer that question, but I tell you, when we drove out there, there's sandbags next to a building that exists on that property today.
You know, there is a reason why we sit here and review the final plats.
Mm-hmm, yeah, you're right.
There could have been, it could have been approved earlier, and I'm going to review, but there's still, when the final plat is presented, something could be caught that was missed before. I just, so I think that this commission could deny this if we felt inclined to do it. I don't. I want to move, unless there's further discussion, I want to move for approval of this.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, Mr. Calendar?
I like the motion that we hold in the biz, our decision, and give staff opportunity to provide valid concerns as they're raising, and not hastily move forward. So my motion would be that we hold in the biz until next session.
That's a substitute motion.
I'll second it.
Which one? Which one you?
The second motion, I think.
Staff, can we do that?
We have two motions out?
You have two motions, vote on the substitute first, and then address the original.
I'm sorry.
You're going to vote on the substitute motion first, and then the original motion?
Did, are, so withdrawals the original?
Yes.
No, no, we vote on the substitute motion. If it fails, we'll vote on the original motion.
All right. Well, let's vote on the substitute motion. You want to repeat what the motion is?
May I ask what the, what the substitute motion, like, what issues he would like, what issues would you like to see resolved by virtue of your substitute motion?
Well, obviously, the concern that we have in listening to staff, I believe, is the encroachment issue. Does it present a problem? The fact that it was approved at some other point, as colleagues have heard, isn't a major...